Webster Board meeting for May 12, 2022. And if we would stand up please for the pledge. Paul, would you read it?
My pleasure. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to God, for which the saints, one nation, a God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Please. All right. Glad to be back with you all. I'm going to tune in to all of the exciting things going on.
He's the new guy.
New face on the board. All right. First item on our agenda this evening is a forum. Comments to the village board from the audience. If there's anybody who would like to address the board, come to the podium, get your name, and we would love to hear what you have to say. And I guess...
One item at this.
I guess we do not have anyone who wishes to address the board this evening at this particular point. So we will move on to our next item on the agenda. And maybe I need to wait on that until 7:02. We have to wait until 7:05. So we will move down to scheduled village business before we come back to the public hearing, which is scheduled for proposed local law number seven. The first item that will be on our agenda this evening, scheduled agenda, is the approval of minutes from the April 28 board meeting.
I don't have any questions, sir.
I'm good. If anybody has any questions, then ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Allen?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
I was not present, but I listened in and I've also read them over. And I would say I have no problem with them, so I...
Thank you. I have to add, um, trustee Valcain back in. Sorry about that.
Wasn't present.
But he did the pledge. Yeah, he did the pledge. Two meetings in a row. I think Carlos should do it next week.
Everybody have an extra pen?
Joe, uh, I think, probably still...
All right. We still have time, so we'll move on at this particular point to resolution to approve the claims and warrants. We have them in front. I had the opportunity to go through them today. And my questions that I had were answered, and one of them being specifically a large amount of money. But that was on page two, which was not included in the conference and receipt. So I had answered to that. I think that was pretty much it for me. Anything, Jerry, you have any questions?
I did not have any questions. I heard the one you were concerned about, but I think you weren't here for that. Chase HSP was a super good explanation from Scanax. Is that what they're called?
Yeah.
That's another services. Yeah.
Okay.
What kind of screws do you need for streetlights? Where... Don't you have screws in your shop?
Oh, funny.
There are special streetlight screws. Where is that one? Over. Those. Oh, my shop, I have all kinds of screws and nuts and bolts.
You and Daryl have a lot of passion for that stuff for some reason. I don't know what it is.
Well, I'll have to...
A microwave.
A microwave. No, that's, I got that. You know what those are for? Because we ordered the poles, essentially, when they, we ordered the poles. The pole got hit March 5th of last year, and we finally just got it in about a month ago. Our, uh, the poles. They ordered the original poles for the North End projects, not the one that was finally sent to us. So the poles didn't match up and the pine hangers didn't match up. So those poles have holes for the pine hangers that they didn't need to have. So I got, rather than replacing the poles or leaving them bad, we got drywall anchors and screws and caps to go into the things we can, you'll see the one that just went up on, uh, West Main and Corning Park. That's got the, this drywall anchors. They, they fit perfect in those holes. They can flood the holes, water won't get into them, and we could use those poles to get the poles and lights backed up. So that's what that $12 is.
I don't think that's a crazy question.
No, no, no.
I have screws in my house. These kind of full shaft, all screws and nuts and...
Crazy. It's a microwave, these others.
The old, the one, the one was really, really old, and Aaron said we should probably replace it.
And he's the cold guy, and he knows.
He really... He was driving along.
He didn't know you're supposed to toast taco shells. Who doesn't know that? So maybe the fire department came once, once, when I overcooked the taco shells. Sorry. See, these things happen.
I don't know, they always end, we poke through the window with tacos out. I just heard another, I didn't know they hurt you. I had to...
I would ask a question. I didn't quite understand. The Haynes' supply. It says, uh, single chain sling, grab hook, sling hook, and then quote, read warning tag.
Is that Haynes' supply? It should be slings to take off. Did I miss an appeal for that one? It was about 1,800, I think?
No, it's only, uh, 398.
Okay. Well, that was the first part that they had ordered. Or, um, I don't know why they did the read warning tag. Probably thought about what kind of loading, um, it could take. But it's just, yes, um, the chains link. We also got another four, um, this is all loud. Four, um...
That's why.
No. A four-piece sling for lifting the boxes off the truck, the leaf boxes and the shipping boxes and things like that. That's one we missed an appeal for. So this was the first part of it. Might be one that you're using for the salt boxes, for the salt spreader, because that goes in the stand down there.
And there was one other one, and that was, and I haven't been by in my, you know, my bad, uh, tree removal and grinding at Pub 235. Is that, was that out in front?
Yeah, we removed a tree there years ago, and we offered to leave the stump grinding, or excuse me, to leave the stump there, because we didn't, haven't taken it all the way now. We never made the grinding at that time. And then he was going to be expanding his patio down there now, so he said, can you take the rest of the tree now? Yeah, we left it there for you. Because there was a thought that he might have carved that into a two, three, and a five for the pub, but that never came to fruition. So we said, yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it now.
I was, yeah, I was just concerned. That was just for the removal of the stump and the grinding. That was $2,500. That was more than the removal for the other...
Yeah, that had to be abbreviated. I don't know if the whole folder's up here, but that had to just be an abbreviated description on there, because that wasn't just the one, the remainder that was there. The stump grindings are usually about 350 bucks or so. I'm just trying to see if that's the one. It had to have another tree on it as well.
He had a...
Probably a Darian's tree. Yeah, there's, um...
That was the birch...
Yeah, 147 Pontiacs and Case Park, um, tree removal. And then it'd be, I think that's a Corning Park one, actually. Is that one? I don't know why they, Case Park in there. Or not Corning, um, excuse me, not Corning Park, Curtis Park? Curtis Park, yeah. It's Darian's, right? Would be on there, it would be on the next one. Yep. That one. Hey, Jesse, well, maybe look at the bills. When, uh, can I look down at one or you look at the other, like, you know?
Yeah, check around 29,650, 28,950, and 54,666. And we were questioning the $12 screws. Something wrong with that, just.
No, we just let that, I'll go back.
All right. Well, that was, uh, that was my concern. That was just for the Pub 235 structure.
Oh, yeah.
No, that was an outrage.
Yeah, absolutely. No, there's, they rest that tree, and oh, there was about 10 feet of the, eight or 10 feet of the trunk that was left and then the tree. So they know they had to remove that trunk, but there's kind of stump, excuse me, but the stump isn't, it, they're usually 350, 400 bucks. It might have been a little more complex there because proximity to sidewalk and everything else.
Okay, so if nothing else, I would ask for a motion to approve. Thank you, boards.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito? Um, trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
All right, next item is resolution to approve the tax warrants for '22, '23.
Did you want to vote in here?
Pardon?
Did you want to hear it?
Yeah, we could do that right now. No, it's, well, let's get this out of the way. I'm going to go to the next one. One item, that's what we're... And that's for the Village of Webster of 2022, '23. And we, we are hereby commanded to receive and collect from several persons named in the separate roll, if you run to the next, several such names in the next column, they have opposite their respective names for the following purposes. And for the general fund, $565,406. For the business improvement district, $24,214. For property cleanup, $2,205. For the sewer fund, $230,880. And for commercial sewer, uh, the sum of $20,159, which, for all purposes, a total amount of $842,864. So, um, I'm having a motion to approve the tax warrant for this fiscal year.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Alito? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I would include that we will receive the taxes that will be going out shortly from June 1st until July 1st, 2022. Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And Friday, 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Except Saturdays and Sundays and holidays at the Village Hall, 28 West Main Street. They can be placed in the mail slot, slot, and/or drop box after hours. Taxes are coming.
I want to read about the unpaid taxes. 9% shall be added.
All right, we do that? Sure. I think everybody will probably get them in untime, but just in case, or do not, uh, has asked me to read that on all such taxes remaining unpaid after July 1st, 2022, an interest of 5% shall be added for the month of July, with an additional 1% per month added thereafter, uh, in fraction, you know, the claimant. All right. So at this particular time, we will move to our public hearing. This is a public hearing on proposed local law number seven, 2022, to consider amending the zoning local law by replacing Chapter 175, Article 14 of the zoning local law of the Village of Webster. Quote, controlled site uses with site plan review and approval. So this, uh, local law, uh, basically has eliminated, uh, certain sections and replaced them, uh, with, um, new updated, uh, information. Anybody would like to comment on them? You're welcome to do so at this particular time, and we'd open up the floor for public comments.
Got to do a resolution, open it.
Sorry.
Uh, well, and I would ask for a motion to open the floor to public comment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do we have a...
All right.
One of the things noted in here is that the zoning board of appeal for review of preliminary site plan, uh, we were giving a, for zoning board's review, preliminary site plan shall include, uh, a number of plans. I think that was previously done by the planning.
Yes.
Okay, if there are no comments on that, uh, it is available, I believe, um, here at Village Hall. If anybody would like to come in to, uh, work that open, uh, otherwise, I'll take a motion to approve the public, uh, hearing portion of the...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Again, I would say that this would be available in Village Hall. Anybody who would like to read it in greater depth, um, and you will be open on this at the next meeting. All right, moving on to item number four. This is a resolution, um, to approve the letter of credit for Pride Mark Homes for Greenbrier Crossing.
Um, sorry. So maybe we'll go on it next time. We, there's been a slight miscommunication with the county, so they're just looking over, so we might have to wait a little bit longer to go.
So they might be coming back with an alteration to it?
I don't think so. We're not, we're not anticipating that, but, um, we have to have 30 days, they have to have it for 30 days, review it. Jake, you want to take this one?
Yeah, they have to have it for up to 30 days. It was, uh, Mayor Dray sent them in, and then I think there was Mr. Finkage sent in a secret coordination letter, um, which it wasn't, because they don't have to take any action on it, but it's not a coordinated review. Um, so then they have a new system, and he's the only one who can send it in to them. A new system that, uh, you have to submit them online or electronically. Um, so that was accomplished, I think, just this week. They have to have it, you know, if they don't respond within 30 days, I'm bored and they will, but if they, they could certainly respond next week, and then it'd be all fine. But if they take the full 30 days, I think it'll be the, the following meeting before the 30-day ticker, you know, clock runs out, so. But except if they come back next week and say there's no comments or no, no changes, and if they do suggest changes, um, the board can intercept those changes, or if we take a, I think it's a super majority or majority plus one, it's seven there. Um, and then you have this, an explanation of why you didn't follow the county planning set, and, um, then you could pass it. But if there's changes, any changes, I think you have to do a public hearing, you have to do a public hearing.
You would have to redo it. So in other words, we probably should have waited, possibly?
I think the likelihood of them changing it, I think, was, we kind of kicked it out, is probably pretty slim, because it doesn't affect anything in the county, and it's a local zoning thing. But you never know. But this would keep the ball rolling, rolling on it, and it didn't cost anything to do it, you know, and, I don't know, to make sure and then to change it, then, then we have to, if we don't, we keep it.
So we'll be ready by the May 26 board meet?
Should be, yeah. I think it went in, oh, in May 26?
Yeah, we were like two days off. One, one day.
It's got to be a full 30, so if it's not, then it's the following one after that, and that's...
That should be...
Yeah, I don't even know what day today is.
I, it'll be in June, but that's fine.
Yeah, but they could come back next week and say, hey, it's fine, or whatever, and then stay right on schedule. But they don't have, they don't have to wait 30 days, but we have to give them 30.
And we'll let you know.
So, stay tuned.
Sorry about that.
If county comes back and, if they have a problem with it, then this will be something we will, in the next meeting. If not, we will let you all know about any changes that they ask. Uh, we are now at the, um, point of approving, uh, resolution to approve the letter of credit for Pride Mark Homes and the Greenbrier Cross, Crossing, Section 2. This is for the section, second section of their building, for the amount of $1,200, This, I believe, will allow me to turn down my volume to, uh, the second line.
I don't know, I know email was whack, you know, we had switched over there, so if everybody saw it done, um, hit in there that he will not be at the 5:12 today's meeting. However, he says, I have, however, reviewed the form with the letter of credit, find it acceptable, so long as the one-year expiration date is filled in at the time the letter of credit is issued by five-star date. There were some points in there, so.
I believe that there is, um, the letter of credit is automatically renewed for one additional year provided the issuer does not notify you 30 days prior to the expiration date of this letter of credit, not being...
Jake, does Daryl sign this second page?
Oh, is that, I was, yeah, so I assumed, so it's not a fifth period there? Yeah.
Okay, can you talk?
Oh, no, this is, if you're, this is, no, this is, that's sort of exhibit A, it's just that you, I think if you have to, uh, try to cap in on it, like, say they didn't do what they were going to do, I would say the advocate has failed to pay or perform under the terms of one or more of the agreements. So then you, I think you would say, this is a demand letter, I guess, so.
The advocate has failed to pay...
Yeah.
Uh, once again, what was, um, what was Dallas with the strikes?
Is that he, um, if you recall, that the zoning board reviews the amount and approves that, and then this board would approve the, um, the form of the letter of credit. So he said he's reviewed it for form and finds it sufficient, and they're here acceptable. I don't know what he's exactly, but he finds it acceptable so long as the one-year expiration date is filled in at the time the letter of credit is issued by five-star.
This letter of credit says here, is automatic renewed, okay, that's an automatic renewal at this point, not at the end of the one year, right?
No.
So it's not an additional year. It's automatically, automatically renewed for one additional year at this point.
And it says it shall have a term that expires at 5:00 p.m. on 2023, which is a letter from the date of the, the year of the date of issuing, so that's one year.
Right. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Trustee Valcain?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I haven't been down there. They moved it along, the last time I was by, they had one building, we were looking at the first one. They put up several more.
They've got two buildings going now, um, and they have to continue on. They just have the water lines, which is put in service, and, and hydrates. So they can't build much above, you know, wood framing, um, until, you know, they have to be within a certain distance of hydrants and fire access when they're doing that. So once they get the road in and everything else, and, and the hydrant's close enough that they're now in service, then they need to build around the edge. They were able to build those ones up front, because they're close enough to the hydrant state road.
Uh, next we have a resolution to declare, uh, these items surplus. Quite a number of items here, which will be going to online auction, municipal auction as well as online auction. I don't know if I need to read them all, but, um, there are 30, uh, do you want me to read them all?
There's about 80 light bulbs, T8s, T1s.
Maybe, yeah, added them up. Garage generator, concrete forms, 40 of them, six inches by 10. That might be worthwhile, add it somebody.
Nothing too expensive.
A Toby Hyde leaf bag.
Yeah. There's a little one that was down at the Wells, and we did a tiny little trailer one that, um, there's something, frankly, I don't think it's ever been, I think they tried it one year, it's been there since I've gotten, since I've been here, and I've never seen it used, so. Uh, I think they tried it one time, and it wasn't the greatest, except if you buy it on an auction, then it's a wonderful vehicle.
Then obviously vehicles.
Yeah, and then, and those vehicles, the, the one, the W-17, you're going to see the bill for that one, that, the linkage broke to put it in the gear. We went back forth, I went onto an auction a couple of weekends ago to be able to do some research on this one. They had a 20, or 1999 F-550 there with the same engine. It's got a, the diesel engine that's in it, when it's a 7.3, it's a very desirable engine. Ours only has 30,000 miles on it.
You know where that one went from?
This, yeah, the, the one down there went for 10 grand. Um, they said, as it said, it was about six, eight hours, um, because you couldn't get it here, it's going to be close to two grand to fix it, but then it's going to be worth a lot more, so, um, I felt it was a good investment to get it fixed, so we could, and we could drive it there, too. So, um, actually, this is, we're going to put those on an online auction, too. There's, there's not a lot this, uh, this time. People can't, you know, supply chain's booked up, there's not a lot of replacements, um, so there's not a lot of stuff at this auction. And I wanted to make sure we had competition on some of these bigger items, especially the trucks. So we're going to try to do an online auction on that, and that's, there's a lot, a lot wider range of people. You miss that, you know, you miss that immediate auction fever that people get, but I think you got a longer time to, I know I ended up with a double, over the double weeks of online auction and stuff. There's still, there's still the auction fever.
Three jobs are very clean.
Yeah, there's muriatic acid, yeah, there we go, we got in there.
It's a tranny jack.
I, I, the last night, I had one box of screws.
I don't know, I don't know if we did, but... I don't know how long I've been dead, but twelve dollars.
You better hurry up and do that, Jake.
Well, no, you were going to, I'm going to outbid you. I don't think I'm going to get it here, but.
Now, there are, I would mention there are three jugs of brick cleaner, unopened, which somebody who has a brick house or a brick sidewalks or whatever, I mean, that might be worthwhile.
I, I never say it right. It's muriatic acid. Um, muriatic, muriatic, I never say it properly. Um, but, yeah, it's for clean up and doing, when you're doing masonry stuff, so.
Well, okay, the way of items here for surplus. Uh, I have a, um, motion to, uh, approve these items for the surplus declaration.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Belido?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the moment our attorney is not here, does anybody get the words from him? Does he have anything for us? I believe, Jake, you mentioned that he was okay with the one resolution, so that's probably all he has. Um, Clark, do we have anything from the, for daughters?
Yes, just real quick, we're, um, getting our taxes, everything ready to go so we can prepare our tax bills and get them sent out by May thirty-first. And actually, we had some help from Jake, and we really appreciate that. We, um, some clarification with the sewer dwellings, so we're in good shape, other than that. I know.
So, I'm sure that you.
Will do.
He can.
Okay, well, a report from BPW and sewer.
The issue is, well, since I've been holding back for at least like about twelve things.
Oh.
Everybody sighs.
One, I just want to, I don't know how many people are watching, um, but.
They all just got off just now.
Well played. Um, one, the, the Route two fifty and, and, and four oh four Main Street and North and South Avenue, uh, the potholes are not locally on. Um, I would encourage everybody, if there is one call, one eight hundred pothole. It's a state, uh, hotline that they set up to report potholes. I did email their local, uh, office. We've gotten a lot of calls. I've gotten two in the past two days about pop tires. Um, the state does have a, um, a mechanism. They've got a small claims section on their website, so I've been directing people to that to where if somebody does have damage to their vehicle on a state highway, they can try to review, uh, depending on what it was and if they knew about it and that. But the potholes, I encourage everybody to report them. Um, but they did reply back today that they were going to, they said they have people out filling potholes every day and they're going to try to make it to fifty as quick as possible because there's, there's some that the asphalt's all gone, you know.
There's a good one, uh, coming off of the, uh, the ghost office there.
Oh.
You see, we get churned there, so.
Yeah, yep, there, yeah, so, you know, there's a lot of the streets. It was a goofy winter and long.
Yep.
It really led to a lot of potholes.
Temperatures.
Yep, and that's something we, we can't fill, you know, on the state roads. Um, but, you know, I encourage people, and still call, you know, feel direct.
Can't you contract to the state for that?
Um, they, I think they do all their own stuff, and, and they have a contract with somebody. I remember seeing a vehicle out here, it wasn't actually state people, a couple of years ago, in a different one that they drive up with a truck and they would just move an arm and, it's a different system. But, um, these are, these are pretty, pretty good ones here, so. Um, but, yeah, just drive careful and, and watch them. Um, so I had somebody request that we put a cone in it. It was in the middle of the driveline, so we really can't do that because that can create other issues. You know, people, people aren't going to slow down, unfortunately, and wait for it's clear to go around it. They'll just squeeze over and drive somebody else out their own, so.
Go buy some cone patch and complete it. I, I will fill it myself.
No, we've, we've, um, we've had some whole patch fall off before, really bad ones. But the, the whole patch just pops right back.
I know, once, even if it buys you a little bit of time.
Oh, we did, I did, did get a call from one resident that, or a business owner that filled it, filled one himself up on two thirty, they were commercial.
I know who that is.
Yeah, and he, uh, he said, yeah, just, you know, if he may help, he just put, I think he just put gravel or something on it. I will not encourage that, um, but, so the state's coming. Um, the ready, we just, an update, we had a free bid meeting this morning, uh, for the ready project, the same, uh, well, deep machine project. Um, so we met out there with the engineers and people that were, uh, interested in bidding or getting more information about it. So that's, I think the bids for that are due here at Village Hall on the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth. There's a bid back in. There's information, there's a public notice out right now for that. Um, the sidewalks are, they're going to replace, I don't know if you noticed, on, uh, Corning Park on the, um, oh, the only ones on Corning Park is on the east side and on the west side of South Avenue. Um, that was done, given by the commuter development block grant, um, through the county, Mother County Planning and Development does that. So, like, that was, you know, our, our money going to come back, and that's really, uh, a nice job. And we end up paying generally around sixty percent, or, excuse me. We end up paying, uh, probably about fifty-five percent, fifty, fifty-five percent, depending on what we get and where we're at. So, um, we get them done pretty, pretty well, so. Um, Kitterburger Park, we're getting ready to do that circle, and I've got a, I'm working with the homeowners association. We've been trying to get this done for a couple of years with the homeowners association of the apartment complex down there. We're going to, it's essentially going to be a smaller version, a scaled back version of what's on five ninety up near Seabreeze, those circles, where they have a bountiful curve, like a truck curb or a truck apron on them, and there's grass in the center. Um, I told them we didn't want additional maintenance stuff. Uh, we could put some of this maintenance free in the center, but if they want to mow it and maintain it with us, we'll work together on it. They agreed to that, so we'll have to try to draw something up in writing where they can get in there. Uh, we did have a request to have conduits so they could get electric across there sometime, maybe for a sign or some uplighting for a sign that they, they obviously would have to come back to planning or zoning for the sign, for, or zoning, yes, now, there's no planning. Um, but that's, that's something moving along, and it came, that's a, that's a problem area up there, so I can't wait to get that done. And then the SDP continues the first Wednesday, I would say the first Wednesday of every month. Um, at ten o'clock, we have our, uh, there's two meetings. There's like an admin meeting, an administrative meeting on the front side, and then a technical meeting immediately following, so those have been progressing. We're getting through some of the decisions and ironing out things with the trickling filters, um, and, uh, the septic receiving station building, things like that. So that's moving along pretty well. And I think that's it.
That's a bad joke.
That wasn't twelve, that was really about six. I'm going to thank six for a future meeting.
Let us know which one that was.
Wow, she got the question.
Okay. Thank you. So that would be it. Um, at this particular time, um, I would announce that our next, uh, meetings, the village board meeting will be May twenty-sixth at, um, seven PM. And that will be followed by a village board workshop on May thirty-first, uh, at six PM here at Village Hall. At this particular time, uh, I would like to ask, uh, our approval to go into executive session to discuss matters relating to the pending litigation. If, uh, anybody would like to make a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that one.
I said, I said.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Belido?
Aye.
Trustee Valkey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
And at this particular point, I would remind everyone once again that our next village board meeting will be at seven o'clock, May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two. So until then, wish everybody a good night and, uh, health. And, uh, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll take care of it.
Good gentleman. That's an hour. You're good, thank you very much.